Right, good evening everybody, welcome to the now December council meeting. You're hereby summoned to attend a meeting of the town council to be held in the main hall. Hemsworth Town Council Field Centre on the Shaw Road, Hemsworth, commencing at 7pm on Thursday 16th of June 2020 with the purpose of transacting the following business. Can we all make sure we've got our phones switched off? We're just going to move down to number one, apologies for absence, to receive apologies for absence and to consider and approve the reasons for absence. Item two, declarations of interest, councillors should disclose peculi or non peculiar interests in any items on this agenda, so myself and Gordon, 12 and 16, Alan and non pecumran. Item three, public question time, to receive questions from members of the public. So if you just put your hand up, state your name and then we'll deal with it. Yes.
First of all, can I just, I'd like to thank the staff for everything that they did regarding the jewellery, doing declarations, those few interest cards. My question relates to item 12, the disposal of furniture. On the agenda, it actually says to consider, offers receipt of buyers of the council plant machinery. At the last meeting, it wasn't actually said that you were going out to sell the machinery. You weren't actually putting it out to tender, you were actually just getting an idea of cost. So why have we moved to actually putting it out there? Because I've not seen anything.
As far as I'm concerned, they were agreed to sell. And that were unanimous, I think.
So where is it being advertised then?
If you want to ask, Alan, if you could just let them know how you've done it.
I contacted, well, did a quick Google, a few things, did a quick Google search for the kind of firms that would be just that kind of thing. Because it's not a regular, all run-of-the-mill kind of item. The firm that does the, what's called a Lola inspection, that's the static inspection for the plant. As he was in the trade, so to speak, I said, if he'd got any firms that he would, that would be interested. In the end, I contacted about 10 firms, some local, some in Toulouse as well. Spoke to them all, thus far, three have replied with offers. It's up to the council tonight to accept one of those offers, or to reject them, or to request further offers, or none of them.
Just from my point of view, I had to miss something then in that meeting, that you were, that you were actually going to look at selling them, but it wasn't happening.
I think it was approved, but I think we talked about it because I think Eric said, and I think councillor Kenyon said about some job, more jobs and then we sell it. Well, you know, we look at selling them then, just get a smaller machine. But everybody voted, I mean, I don't really want to sell them myself, but I went with the majority because, you know.
I've not seen it advertised and from my own personal point of view, yeah, the council just, there'll probably be people in the community that didn't know that they were actually up for sale and to be tended for, et cetera.
Well, we are where we are now, we'll discuss it when we come to that item.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just said I wasn't in pressure that we'd be involved to get attended the discussion selling it.
Did they actually get a valuation on the machine, guys, it's just, I figured somebody's come up with?
No, I think we got a valuation, I think valuations were sought. Well, no, I know. So, yeah, they did get, as far as my way of getting valuations.
I've got a question for a member of the group. Can you update on the car park, it's William.
Alan?
Yes, William, I spoke to the planning consultant a couple of weeks ago. That ball is in Wakefield Council Court and waiting for approval to come through.
Any more questions? Yes, sir.
Ian, Ian McGinnis from the Highfield District. Any progress on any objections to the building upon that site? Has anything bothered been done?
The objection went in, again, that ball's in Wakefield Court. How long does the objection take for them to respond? I don't know, so you have us Wakefield.
Can I add this question?
Yeah.
It's not planning permission that's been applied for, it's actually taking the land out of the green to brown. So how the process works is, the objections will be sent to the government inspector who makes the decision and then it goes back to Wakefield Council who then approve or disapprove it. So it's with the government.
Any further, would the access board, have you got any quotes? Any plans for accessible equipment?
That's what we did for finance next week.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the finance committee meeting, next week. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on. Yeah, we'll move on then to item four, recorded for votes, ask them in it, numbers 262, to consider the items which are on the agenda, should have been, have a recorded vote. We're still concerned with them anyway, if somebody wants it, the garden manager comes to it.
Councillor Middleton has asked for recorded votes on items 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 16, 20, 21 and 22.
Yeah. Item five, correspondence, the town clerk to report some correspondence in respect to the following. So, an email from the Edmondson Arts, Paprika School, by the council, facilitating a session with children in the council chamber. I think that one went down well, didn't it, Alan? Item B, email from Rural Market Town Group, inquiring whether the council will subscribe for membership. Well, we haven't got a market, so there's no point in that anyway. And I think we agreed last time.
I'm changing trust members.
Yeah, so are we, do we all agree that we don't?
It's a fee of £97, which obviously in the grand scheme of things isn't a huge demand. But it's membership to a rural market town body. And with the greatest respect of love to my town, it's not a rural market town. But it's up to members.
It used to be. Now, we want the best markets going.
Does it mean that if we do a Christmas event, we can't have a market? It's not like a licensed market.
We do, yeah, we do that everywhere, yeah. So we are, we're all in favour of not signing up to that side of that, yeah. So we'll move on to see email from councillor Melanie Jones, inquiring support of possible pitch provision for Hemsworth Dragons, ARLCN, FC. I think we discussed this later, it's accommodating them, Melanie, that's the problem. I'd love to bring it to members to help, but there's just.
My suggestion, including item seven.
Yeah, oh, sorry, yeah. Can we include that in on their football pitches? Yeah. So we'll, item six, a letter of thanks, to consider issuing a letter of thanks to a member of Hemsworth Mines as well for FC in respect of ceiling work done for the community. Well, I like all that, yeah. Are we all in favour? Are you okay, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, item seven, football pitches, to consider prospective requests from Hemsworth Dragons Town FC and Hemsworth Terriers FC regarding the future use of the football facilities at Sandgate Lane and Cemetery Road. This is some good ear from Hemsworth Terriers, anybody have a right to speak? Come one of you, do, what do you want to?
Can I just, for the advice that, notwithstanding what they're going to say now, I would advise to set up a working group to meet with respective teams individually. Because with the great respect, there's more needs saying than committed tonight, I think, doesn't there? It is flashing out in more detail.
I think that's what we're going to suggest, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so we'll get a working party then, if councillors want to sell. We now want to, who's going to be on that working group? So is there anybody that wants to be on the working group for football? Yes. So councillor Kenyon, yeah, councillor Middleton. So, Eric?
No, thanks.
Yeah. Councillor Hurd and, I think it's Geoff tonight, they're all right?
Yeah, it's, enjoy yourself.
All right, sorry.
Because he's in Holland.
I thought there was something wrong with him.
No.
It's in councillor Westman, so that's.
I'm sorry, I should have said it when I went back.
For five.
Do you need a certain number? I'm happy to do it, but I don't need two.
We can have five or six, so.
Yeah.
What sort of time? I'm not more than, what sort of times would be it?
I think the councillors that are volunteering before I start at the evening meetings. But it would just, it would, we can fit it to, you know, to fit round.
It's a working group for councillors, I'm saying.
It's a working group, so the quorum is irrelevant because you can't make any decisions. It would meet the individual teams, discuss their needs and then report by recommendations the councillors consider.
I've got one, yeah, one of them.
Could we approach school? I know something I want to add in now.
You're already on it.
Yeah, I'm going to say.
The one that has, we wrote for long. We've got that, Terriers, Western Terriers are using that. On that, Melanie, if I can just ask you a question. One of the problems over the last few years have been when Alwood Academy took over from Wakefield running at high school. That's where the main problems been with Terriers providing football fields because Alwood Academy charged these extortionate rates, am I right Dale? From what Wakefield Council used to charge them. So could you look at, having a look at that, because realistically, Wakefield Council are responsible for providing green pictures and have been what, last 50, 60 years in Hemsworth?
You'll be well aware that academisation is a government scheme and that is a fact. With regards to anything to do with the academy, they are setting up a licensing board because I tried to get Hemsworth Dragons on there. We, so no, I can't, it's an academy.
So there's no way, way to pressure them? Because last year, we went on and we might talk pitches out because they've got nobody at the place, Alan. We put out the goalposts, we might talk pitches out to help them out, you know, so that.
That's the conversation they really need to have with Alwood Academy.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll see if we can do that then, Jean, to get Hemsworth Dragons in some way to plan.
Yeah.
At the high school, the last season we had there was 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 per season. I don't know what it is now, what is it now, do you know? For an adult team.
On pitch?
Yeah, pitch for a season. 13, 14, 15. It could be out for like £100 a game.
They're charging them per game, aren't they?
Ridiculous.
Don't throw, let him come on that. We have to buy his own goalposts as well. Yeah, we own our goalposts, don't we? Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Ridiculous, isn't it?
We'll move on then and we'll do that work.
Going to charge for football without?
And I agree about Hemsworth Dragons?
Yeah.
Okay, so Hemsworth Dragons were on the rugby union pitch and they've come back with charges of £6,000 per quarter. There are 135 children playing on that pitch. Now, we have got a pitch in Kinsey, but it's just not ready for them. And my proposal was, when we, when I was a town councillor, we commissioned a Sports England study into sports provision in Hemsworth and it said that the provision for football was excellent, but there was no provision for family-based activities and rugby. So my thoughts were, is there any way that you could negotiate even just a period of time for these kids either on Sandgate or on Cemetery Road at all? Just temporarily then.
You won't be able to because it's over, you, it's used three times, four times a week, that was training. So, you know, they won't be able to do exactly something or even train them.
I just don't, I don't know what you think, I don't think we can accommodate, that's what.
There's 55 teams, using five pitches and three of them are junior pitches. So the only two pitches really we can play at Old Mays Rugby on 118s is the two main fields and they're after altering goalposts and reeling Mark Hartfield out. So it's, it's an absolute nightmare.
As Alan's just said, the working group can get involved in that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right.
So we've seen, just one more point, we did contact Sacred Arts School, Melanie, and they were, you know, said, there's no problem. We allow Terriers to use that. But you've not taken that option up because it's lopsided. But that might be an idea for them, the only thing is, there's no changing rooms. We are, they use one at classrooms at school, but that's a liaise with caretaker then.
So we'll, obviously, the working group and then they can come back to us and then, you know, see what they're going to do. So we'll move to item eight, seaside trips, summer 2022, to confirm the details for the provision of coaches for the seaside trips. So, yeah, we can get it on the website tomorrow. And how are we going to play this? Because I think we have got to scrutinise it because we're not going to know who, I think they need to prove their address and their family, you know. And it'd just be a bit more work, but that'll mean that we can accommodate the people that live in this area because that's what it's for. Are we all in agreement with that for proof? Proof of address?
Need to be supervised.
Right, well, I agree with, you know, what you said there, because I also maybe possibly suggested, because I'm, I was like a raffle. So you come down to council, a ballot, so you get your number, you say, I've got Mrs Smith and Kingsley and me and the two kids. So that was like one times four and then you can do it on Facebook Live, somebody on the phone with an automatic number generator, number one, number two, you know, that trip.
I think the only problem with that is, you're going to have families, so you might have a family of two and a family of four. And how are you going to work out, that's the only problem. It's a good idea to do it standard. I think what you, my personal worry would be, if you put it on Facebook tomorrow, come and get your tickets, the families are working and not going to, are going to be missing out on that. And I think it should be for everybody because I think everybody is struggling at the minute. Max, do you have any thoughts of it?
Why not? First come, first served, that's.
I was talking about we said full bags first to see what, will people who are struggling or can't afford to go anywhere?
Yeah, I think, that's right, but first come, first served does, I've got, still have that problem that.
Yeah, but we know this when we, when we decided to have it and I'm in agreement, we don't, don't get me wrong. We are going to get problems whichever way you look at it.
Full bags first, but then.
So, Alan, what were you going to say?
How many tickets for the food bag then, seeing the members want to put them to one side?
How can you do that?
Were we having one bus for Fitzwilliam and one for Hemsworth? Or is it Fitzwilliam and Kingsley and one for Hemsworth?
I suggest one Hemsworth, one for Kinsey, it's William.
Yeah, that's, that's how I thought.
And we're doing two days, aren't we?
Yeah, eh?
And there's two, two days.
Two, two buses, two days.
So, obviously, we could go through. We could go through full bags and that first, let them want first trips.
There's another thing as well, they have to be accompanied, don't they? His family is, unless, well, his family's into it.
Yeah, it's a family tree.
Oh, yeah, but for adults, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
But if, if the buses fail, then why not put another, another bus on?
Is there any, is there any more buses, Alan, of the company? Can you try them and then let's try and, you know, for sake of, is it £500, Alan?
A bus, yeah.
Per bus? Yeah. So if we could get another two buses, then three buses one, three buses on the next day. And get back to as soon as you can with that, Alan.
Should we say like 70% of tickets then, you have the patients at full bags to those people that they know are struggling? And they keep 30% back for people who feel like, you know, they want to go on that trip? Because there's going to be people that are struggling, but they're not, they're not going to go back.
Now, this is, this is what they are about, but, because a lot of people are working at that.
70% of them, you can move back and 70% for.
No, 70% between the two full bags, because you have too many to send each other.
Yes, that's a big percentage.
70 points, isn't it? On the, on the buses, yeah. Right, so, is there anything else then? So proof of address, it's going on website tomorrow. Yeah, just a minute, proof of address is going on website and obviously accompanied by.
It's first come, first served.
Yeah, I think once we've done the full bags, I think we've got to. Yeah, we just increased it on the whole, a lot of us as well on each.
So the 70% of the full bags is first come, first served.
Yeah, for that split tweet too.
Everybody else is about.
No, it's just first.
I think we let the ladies who run the full bags, they will tell us who they think.
Yeah, yeah. Have a chat.
Looking at 70 people, it's all, it's all right.
Well, it's going to be three, but normally 64, is it, on a bus? So it's going to be three, yeah.
Just be fair, you want to say, but that takes.
I was going to say, it's 52 on the bus.
Yeah, we have to, yeah. And there'll, there'll be a deciding, access for them will be on the bus as well, yeah.
There are only 52 on the bus.
I thought there were 64, but yes.
You know, some people who are struggling, you know, tickets, could you not like stop hours at some late evenings? Could you not make them tickets available at that time? So people who do work, who are struggling and they'll go to the full bags and got a fare bash to come after work to get the tickets for their family.
Right, I think Alan's just made a good point, they can ring for tickets anytime and then they can put the name down and then we can reserve the tickets. So that, so start out, I'm, yeah, so we're going to move to item nine, fund bear, to consider revise requests to have a fund bear in Hemsworth Waterpark from 7 to 21st of August and then in June.
17.
June 24 to 26 and 17 to 21st of August. The only thing I think with that is, is the.
It's the usual location for the fund bear would be that top field which we need for the other flow car park. So if the council approves it, it really, I would advise it not be there, would need to be further across. Or if you do decide to put it in the other flow car park, be prepared for traffic.
Well, why not, well, I'm just speaking out loud, do you know on the other side, where the second lady is quite big there? Could it not go there? Can't get down. So we have to make a decision, I mean, it's going to be busy too. So we really don't need the space for car parks, I think, on this one, we're going to have to decline. Yeah, what do you think?
Yeah, I think we're not going to be able to do it.
Yeah, so, no, Alan, sorry for that, just letting you know. Item 10, defibrillator, Kinsey, town clerk to report accordingly.
Yes, my honour, the Kinsey and Fixley Resource Centre have confirmed that they would be happy to have a defibrillator placed on their premises, but it wouldn't be 24 hour, 24 hour access though, which is still fine because defibrillators registered with a national organisation called the circuit. And when they're registered, you can designate the times. So if the council did approve travel to the centre and the times were designated with the circuit, if somebody needed it on a weekend at 2 in the morning and called 999, they wouldn't be directed to it. So the, the non 24 hour accessing isn't great, but it's not, it's not end of the world stuff either. I've also written to the shop in the Tull Bridge, but they've yet to get back to me. So the options are to wait for the shop or to go ahead with the resource centre in the knowledge that it's not 24 hour access.
Is there a defibrillator in, in Fitzwilliam?
Yeah, yeah, and Fixley, there were one at Fixley as well.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because if they have, then it would just want to be Waterpark, but yeah, yeah, I'm in favour of that, are we all in favour?
Waiting, waiting.
Yes, it has to be 24 hours.
No.
I can wait, can we, can we phone them?
Okay, come, yeah, we'll, we'll wait.
You can have them 25 hours.
All this time, I'll be so.
The person who's outside that shop, so I'm pretty sure.
All the other option is leisure.
Melanie?
I don't know, I don't know.
There was an offer from Kinsey Coronation and I'm aware that that's open quite.
Too close to, what, there's nothing in between.
It's as close as Newmarket Road and being a coronation nurse, they're ringing the 999, I'm waiting for that to open. Could potentially, it costs a little bit. Sorry, I can't hear.
We won't put it where it will.
You've got a mic there, Donna, we've, we've sold these mics so you can.
Yeah, we said we won't.
No, it's, you can, yeah, yeah.
We won't put it at the community centre because it's locked, so we want it further in the middle of the village. Coronation Corvus, it's not on main road, if you put it, I think it needs to be on that main road, definitely.
It is to be outside, isn't it?
I'm sure if we ring News and Boars, they'll give you a number for Gaffer Road there.
Well, I think, Alan, can you contact them and then we'll just defer that then to next meeting.
It doesn't have to be locked up, that's what we're saying.
They don't have to lock them up.
Can you just come through chair and we'll, yeah. So, yeah, we're going to defer it and then let it come back when you spoke to, is it Kevin? Was it Kevin at News and Boars, yeah?
Can you just, has anybody approached doctors in Kinsey? Or outside the doctors, everybody knows where the doctors are.
Never thought of. No, they are. It's all because she can get down inside a chemist.
You can get down inside.
I've been, I've been told gates locked on an idea.
Chemist then? It's on the main road.
Come, let's just see what News and Boars come up with and then if that fails, we can always, yeah, outside chemist. Yeah. I think we're going to, we're going to settle for News and Boars failing that, please, chemist, yeah? Are we all in favour?
Yeah.
Yeah. Item 11, committee meetings, live streaming, to consider live streaming committee meetings, this meeting, is this what, I put this on. I think, I will mention before, so we've got the facility to do it now, so, yeah, I mean, we're all in favour of that.
Can I just say, is it all committee meetings or one sub?
All committee meetings, it won't be sub financed, because that's exclusion, isn't it?
Can we just, sorry, Geoff, can we just ask for some feedback on how it's gone tonight? Some simple things are connected to that. We're all linked, just how the, the volume is on the Zoom meeting.
I assume it's okay, but I don't, I don't understand the question.
Can we just ask for some feedback from people that were on Zoom?
I'm gonna ask some for some feedback now, we live.
I don't have to do that.
Uh, Lynell put us in the picture, but we have got these, Alan, so I don't think that's gonna.
Um, I've only had one complaint about the sound, but obviously I'm on a different sound system to you, my sounds. And that was something I was gonna say, it is a general complaint I get over and over again, people join the Zoom, get fed up with the sound quality and come and listen to the live stream instead because the sound quality is better. Now, part of that is the microphones that you've now got, so if you're using the microphones, that does help.
Yeah.
But you need a better sound unit than the one we've got, because the one on that camera just isn't good enough.
Well, we're trying and we've got these now, and so let's see how it goes, uh, live stream as a meeting.
Yeah, or I just think, we're on Zoom right now, Alan, is there any comments? So people on Zoom, can you tell us if you can hear us?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not a Zoom person, sorry. Oh, Shane Flex says sound quality is good.
Ah. I think we've just heard it there, so, yeah. Thanks for that, Shane.
There you go. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. So we're gonna move on to item twelve, plant machinery disposal to consider offers received from prospective.
Item eleven, we hope your next one's be after that though, because it could just be.
Yeah.
Yeah, week after next.
Yeah, week after next. Item twelve, plant machinery disposal to consider offers received prospective buyers for the council's plant machinery. Alan, I'll leave that to you.
Um, yeah, Madam Chair, uh, three offers have been received, members have seen all the, all the details. Um, I recommend going with the highest individual office for each item of plant, yeah.
Are we all in favour of that?
Yeah.
Go on, Donna.
But you're trash waiting to get this one though.
Yeah.
Are you?
Non-procure, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Are we all in favour of that?
It just feels loud, it feels low amounts.
Yeah.
No. Well, it's like, sorry, can I just say, can I come in?
No, no, just, no, just a minute.
It just, it just feels low and I don't know if we should go to getting value, but if that costs, getting values, it'll cost us three grand or whatever.
They've been valued, I can put, I can put an advert out, Madam Chair.
What's the value that?
They were valued about three or four months ago in regions of what, in fact, they were slightly less than what we were offered.
Can we see these valuations then, please?
I, I think, I, I think you did send them. Alan, can you confirm that, that they offered less than what you've got there?
She's seen the offer.
No, I know.
I've got some valuations.
Can, it, it would have been emailed, they only, they only offered ten grand. Let's all speak at once then, Alan.
What Charles Key's talking about is one of the firms that have now submitted an offer, they came out a few months ago and gave a valuation, and it's actually, that valuation is lower than what they've submitted that.
It should have done well, thank you for this point.
From, from my point of view, as I approach it, you haven't actually made, you haven't advertised it. You haven't out-advertised it so that people in the industry know that you're actually selling them. That, that isn't what was clear at the last meeting, it was that you were going to get a valuation.
No, I have to stop you there because I'm gonna put, I'm gonna ask Alan, it was devoted to sell. Now, it, we've got the, Alan's done what he's been told to do. Um, he, add value at you, what were the third, what were the company that?
Excuse me, can I suggest that, is it, I'll put out the time tomorrow morning, it was agreed to sell, that's definite, I remember that, without question. Um, I can put out the time tomorrow morning, the next council meeting is only four weeks away, come back to it then, any further offers can be considered then.
I'm not, I'm not being funny, Chair, but you've actually said that you've got an interest in this.
It's a non-procure interest, I know what I'm doing, and I'm okay to discuss if I want to.
I thought that, I thought that if you've got an interest in it, you were supposed to.
No, 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 only a procure interest. But I'm happy to go with what Donna Moran has just said, uh, to get some more quotes.
No bids.
No bids.
I think, well, we've been trying to get rid of this equipment for a long time now. Sorry, I keep knocking it over, talking about, um, trying to get rid of it for a long time, we've got insurance on it, we've got no one to use it. We've, we've moved on into another meeting, I suppose.
Excuse me, we have got, we have got drivers that can drive all that machinery.
We've got three.
We don't need it, do we?
No, but it's done its job, it's been on allotments seven hundred times. So I'm saying, when it came up to sell it, I'm not gonna problem and like, uh, Sean, Sean said, we need to down scale, probably we're smaller unit than that twelve tonne, it's done its job, I get that. And if we can get money back for it, and then when we need doing things, yeah, rent, rent it in.
Yeah, agree.
I'm not gonna problem with that.
What I'm trying to say is, you know, I've certainly been pushing for it, I don't think we need it. Um, I get what you're saying, I understand that, you know, we should get a valuation, a valuation will cost us. That's adding more onto what we've got, while we're still paying, it's there, anything could happen, alternatives, use, whatever. We need to get rid of it, but we need the iron spade, so four weeks, this is that time, it's only work, someone's gonna pay for it. And if we've gone out to three different companies that have come back with very, very similar bids, then to me, that's must be similar to what it is. It was not.
Can you just come through Chair, please? You've had, you know, so, right, so we're gonna go with.
That's my turn, I think your six proposal, that's four weeks.
But I'm not being funny, but next, the next one will be concluded, if, and it goes out again. You know, I mean, we said, it's done what it, it's been asked to do. And we've got, it's done, I think it's done its best with that, so another month and then we make the decision. Yeah.
Chair.
Right, so, yes.
Why don't you try to do a public auction where it's, then nobody can argue over it. You've got to pay. You've got to pay a fee.
Yeah, you, you have to pay a commission.
You have to pay.
You'll sell it.
You'll not sell it, they take commission off.
But if, if it's big in the ice bed, what difference does it make?
But it might not.
It might not.
You go back to ice bed.
You've, you've got to pay to enter it though.
Of course, yeah.
You do. You do.
The one at Nottingley.
You do.
The one at Nottingley.
Excuse me, we're not gonna get into an argument about it. We've just made it, we've just made the decision for it to come back to council and that's what we're gonna do. So we're gonna move on to item thirteen, Embsworth Waterpark path res servicing.
Just, can we just vote, just so it can be recorded, so we vote whether it's.
Yeah, all right, then, so we're all in favour of that, yeah. Yeah. Um, so item thirteen, Embsworth Waterpark path res servicing, to consider reserving the path in Embsworth Waterpark. Alan, you've got some quotes.
Uh, yeah, well, I've got one quote, just to give members an idea of what the cost would be, and it's, um, forty-five thousand pounds. Um, there is no budget for it, so we have to manage reserves. If the council wants to pursue it, you have to go to consultation and then come back to council after the consultation. And if the council still wants to pursue it, it would have to go to tender.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about this like a few year ago now, and we talked about using this plant machinery and the lads still there at the time, to give them it to sell.
Yeah.
Cost of them quotes, like that, they're part of the state. Um, is that still feasible, feasible or? I mean, if you're gonna tarmac, it's, what, what you're looking at, it's a hundred and forty pound, it's all the time, I could say.
If you didn't eat it out, you'll be able to do it a lot cheaper.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's, uh, I don't think at this moment in town, we've got anybody that can do that as well.
Um, Charles.
I was gonna say, uh, well, that's what I was saying about that, I'm having a staff to do nowadays. Not only that, like I said, we've got a digger, and we've got a big role to talk about, that pass, we've got a lot of machinery, it's still down.
That, that role is ideal for that.
That role is still big.
It isn't. No, it's not, it's not, it does football fields, Charlie, if that role is ideal. That role is not for sale, because we said it's football pitches. But that, that's, you know, the, uh, the hard code that blocks it down, road planing, well, up down, ready to tarmac on it. We've never got tarmac because price we had last time, the forty thousand. And we didn't wanna spend that, you know, that on it, we've got, at that time, more important things to spend on. And with, you know, with the coronavirus pandemic, we died as well, didn't we?
Yeah, right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, yeah, I'm gonna take yours and then I'll take yours and then that's it from public because it's a council meeting and we've got to move progress on it. So, um, yes, so.
Yeah, I just want to say.
Yeah, I can hear.
I went to globally celebrations down there and I found, um, I took it Thursday, maybe it's still two week after, it cost me. And your first day, it just said, amount of people that fell that day were horrendous.
This is why we want the pass doing.
Because I went.
Yeah, this is why this is in of the agenda.
And it cost, it'll cost more than forty thousand pound if somebody soldier.
It's forty, five, sorry, can you say that again?
I said it'll cost more than forty thousand pound if somebody soldier, because you are aware of that path being bad.
It's forty-five thousand pound and we have.
Well, it'll cost a lot more than that if somebody soldier.
We have put road planings down and we've tried, but this is what.
Yeah.
Before it didn't even have that, there was just lethal steps where people, at one time, wheelchairs did get up it. But as it's, as it's gone, as the road planing's been used, it's gone to side, that's what happens with it. But you're right, you're hundred percent right.
Imagine you fall in, you know, it, it, it hurts.
You, you're absolutely right, and I think that's why this has got to happen so fast.
It's got to be known because you're gonna end up in trouble because you are aware of it.
Right, yes.
Well, you've got to put a claim in.
The last meeting we spoke about, Waterpark, it's been neglected over years. And you all agreed, so just get it done then, bring it forward, bring it into millennium, right?
Because.
Back one from years and years ago.
No, um.
Last meeting, we just posted, perhaps part of that being neglected, so.
Yeah. Alan, have we got, have we got, can we? Obviously, it's a certain amount, it's gone as well. Can everybody come through Chair, else there's no point. Right, it has to go to consultation, this is what we agreed, I figure. Uh, I think it is an emergency as well.
Don't look at that, it's just two week of this.
It is an emergency that I've just said.
Well, it's every meeting we just mentioned.
Yeah, well, for me, I, I've just said, we'll have to discuss it, we've got reserves and it's important. But we voted for consultation over a certain amount, this is what happens now, we've got to have our own consultation.
Is this not called essential maintenance, though?
I was proposed that we go and get some quotes, and then while we get into quotes, it goes out, send them. And then it's not taking no more consultation, it's taking no more time.
How, how long does the consultation last, Alan?
It lasts one year, it can be a week, it can be a year, but I'd recommend at least a fortnight.
So that's what we'll do then, are we all in favour?
In the process.
And that's at the same time.
Yes.
Are we all in favour? Well, he's got, he's got a quote.
That's one quote.
We have ours, perhaps tender as well.
Yeah.
That's the law.
Oh, it's the way, no, it's the way.
Just a minute, Alan, so, did you not, so have you only specifically ruled one, one firm and they've said that?
I've got a quote to establish how much it would cost, because I've got no idea how much tarmac in a path will cost. And the purpose of that is to get a ballpark figure, because if it's below twenty-five thousand pounds, you can accept the quote now. Above twenty-five thousand pounds, you have to go out to tender. So, I mean, go to tender, that firm may well then be submit that quote out tender, that's up to him or her.
Yeah.
But it must go out to tender, it can go out in parallel to a consultation as well, but it must go out to tender.
Yeah, so we've agreed then, we're gonna get the, uh, out to tender, and meantime, we can have a consultation. But sooner rather than later, I think it's really urgent.
Yeah.
It has been a long time.
We had a quote nineteen, twenty months ago from South Yorkshire tarmac, forty thousand pound. That was for our pass, did you fall down in car park or did you fall down? On, on the path that goes around lakes, yeah. And that was forty thousand because we were, you know, we were aware that it was dilapidated, but because of pandemic coronavirus, put it on hold, you know, we didn't know where we stood.
But our medical team were brilliant.
Yeah.
They were, they were brilliant, I must say that. When she said, amount of people that had fell that day, don't you feel accident thing in that?
Yeah, yeah. All right, then I, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would it, would it walk there?
That'd be worse, that'd be worse. That'd be worse. But I'm gonna take the last one, just a minute, I'm just gonna take the last one from Lynn.
I'm really sorry about this, it's slightly off topic, but a member of the public's just asking about the car park because wasn't there a promise that was gonna be done by Yorkshire Water when they finished the site?
They said that they repaired what they dug up that were in.
They only repaired what they dug up, yeah.
Send your contact to Whitefield Council, they haven't been.
Yeah.
For that.
Yeah.
I've written to it to the council, yeah. They came back, they came back and said, do you want to be part of the resurface, I'd be service.
Melanie's, uh.
I'm not aware of this, so they may be aware of that.
Yeah, well.
If you copied me into the email, might be aware of it, but they're, I'm not thinking it's.
Yeah, can, can you send, uh.
There are three of us.
It was, it, obviously, the meeting between yourselves, that you've, you know, this is what I wanted to discuss a few things, but you, you, you'll know about it anyway. So, right, we're gonna move on then, um, to item fourteen, uh, subject access requests. The town clerk to report on two anonymised subject access requests and to authorise the respective responses accordingly.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it just needs approval, I can't, I've got those details, it needs approval.
No, I think we have to, you know, um, we have to do it anyway, it's par for the course, isn't it? So, yeah, um, are we all in favour for that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So then we'll move to fifteen, same again, freedom of information request, the town clerk to report on anonymised freedom of information requests received to authorise the respective responses accordingly. Are we all in favour of that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Item six, internal, sixteen, sorry, internal controls and internal audit to receive the, uh.
Ethicism.
Yeah, I've really stuck on that one, of the system internal controls to receive the internal auditor's report for the year ended thirty-first of March twenty twenty-two. And they appoint, and to appoint an internal auditor and confirm the scope of internal audit from twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. So, has it been?
It's all circulated, Madam Chair.
Yeah, has it been any, any?
It's some bio bookie issues, but not in front of them.
Right, can I just ask if there are data, cut update on these one, sorry, no cut update on my meeting, it's signed off.
On two, on this one, two parts of it, the, to receive the report has to be done tonight, but you can be further at the point of the auditor.
Well, why not just use the same what we've been using?
That's what the council, Madam Chair.
Well. What's the problem, I mean, how, how long have we had this one?
But we're in the middle of a forensic audit, aren't we, which is my concern, so we need to ensure that the forensic auditor agrees with that order, and if they do, then we'll go with it. But let's just make sure there's no inaptities in it first, would we like to defer that bit?
Yeah, we did defer it to next.
Yeah, so the report can accept it, but then defer the appointment.
I think it was a question of the other, so.
Yeah.
Is it with the next time, anyway?
No, we have a mid-year order, we have to do so like later this summer.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we're all agreeing to that. Yeah, are we all in favour? Yeah, uh, yeah, so we'll move on to item seventeen, annual governance statement twenty twenty-one to twenty-two to consider and approve the annual governance statement for the year ended thirty-first of March twenty twenty-two.
That's been circulated, Madam Chair, it needs approval and published next week.
Yeah, are we all in favour?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, moving on again, eighteen, annual accounting statements twenty twenty-one to twenty-two to consider and approve the annual accounting statements for the year ended thirty-first of March twenty twenty-two. Yeah.
Send me going, I'm trying to circulate it to the public next week.
Are these time bound? Are these time bound?
Yes.
So we, we won't get the forensic report back before fix?
No.
So.
But you can, you can always go back and, and pick things up.
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, that's. Um, yeah, um, are we all in favour then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So is there any ability against, because nobody's putting their hands on it, I am in favour, are we all in favour? I think we need to start showing, you want the card of quotes, let's, let's put his hands up. Otherwise, we'll take it as a, uh, abstain. Um, so, I think, so, um, I'll bid the, um, the public. Um, so, I, so, um, I'll bid the, um, the public good evening, because we're on to exclusion of present public. Um, this star, yeah, um, we're going to use this star today, excuse, can you just, yeah, can you just see him?